Good morning. Call this meeting in order. It's May 20, 2015. It's 10 o'clock. Call to order, Mr. Eldon Callan.
Here.
Mr. Ed Hawkins is not here, and Tom Bloom is here. At this time, I ask you rise for a moment of silence, and then the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll now have consents and approvals.
We have three exonerations today, $851.41, and one correction to TJ Contracting LLC. There are no fiduciary orders. We have minutes of May 6th and 13th. Vouchers, General County Fund, $231,890.62. General County Purchasing Card, $16,277.01. Cole Severance Fund, $20,298.57. Chestnut Ridge Park, $671. Mason Dixon Park, $174.89. Assessors Valuation Fund, $2,059. Home Confinement Fund, $920.99. 911 Purchasing Card, $134.92. 911 Cash, $1,0296.94. Law Enforcement, Propit尔, $2,0587.54, for a total of $276,314.88. And I have budget revisions for Emergency Management, Extension Office, and Sheriff's Office.
Move for approval.
Second, it's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes. Is Renetta going to do grants? Oh, okay.
Just have some items for reimbursement today.
Okay.
The first is part of the Governor's Highway Safety Program grant alcohol transfer funds for the amount of $3,228.71 for April. DUI Grant also for April, $3,272.77. The Dave Report Center Grant, April 2015, $18,173.24. And the Evoque Grant for April, $4,250.30. And then we also have some items. Oh, I'm sorry, this one. Safe Communities, April 2015, $231.1. And then for the DUI Grant and other various Governor's Highway Safety Program Grants, items of no activity for April and actually for March. Just need the President's signature.
Move to approve and authorize the President to sign.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes.
Thank you. I'll just, I'll collect this.
Okay. Okay, next item's going to be, if we don't mind moving, Rachel Pauling, USDA Wildlife Technician Regarding Procedures to Handle Wild Animals. Feel free to come on down, whatever.
You can stand or sit.
Yeah, whatever you'd like to do.
Okay, I just said.
Okay.
Actually, I'm Sam Mills with the USDA Wildlife Service under Rabies Biology for the State. Rachel contacted me and thought maybe I'd be better to present this information, but she will be available for questions as well. We've also invited the Health Department here to provide any input on their side of things as well.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
It was brought to our attention that you had a sick-acting raccoon in the past couple of weeks that couldn't find anybody to take care of, so we thought we'd provide you with some information of the work we do.
Fantastic.
So essentially, I guess, in a nutshell, we have an oral rabies vaccination program that runs north to south through the states, about 30 miles wide. We actually drop vaccine pellets in that area, with everything to the east of the barrier being positive for rabies and everything on the west side free of rabies. So we're trying to maintain that barrier to keep them from moving westward. That is the goal of the program, with eventual movement to the east and elimination of rabies in West Virginia. That's the long-term goal. But in order to accomplish that mission, we need to get our hands basically on any sick or strange-acting animals. We even pick up roadkill animals, animals that are suspicious, and we test those animals for rabies, and that essentially kind of paints a picture across the state of where the rabies cases are and helps us better make good programmatic decisions as to where we move our base zone to. So what that means for you all is that we do pick up sick and strange-acting raccoons. Obviously, this won't fix all of your problems mainly, but we are available and we have a phone number and some information, actually a flow chart that we can hand out, and we have an electronic version that we will provide you as well, as what to do when you do have a sick raccoon call or sick scum, whatever it may be. You know, if there's been an exposure, obviously that has to go through the Health Department. We will handle that for human health and safety concerns. But if it's just a sick strange animal in someone's yard, at the school, wherever it may be, then there's a good chance that we can help you out with that, and we can come get that raccoon that oftentimes other agencies may not be able to get to.
Well, that was the situation here, and I don't know if she was even familiar with raccoons. So is this on a website? Would it be possible if we, rather than reinvent the wheel on our website, would it be possible to create a link to all this on our website?
We could, yeah. We can provide a link to that. We have a flow chart here that makes it really nice. When you have a, yeah, when you have a sick raccoon, you know, obviously it takes to do this. Is it a wild animal? Yes, then go to this. If it's not a wild animal, then we can call up Wildlife or Animal Control Officer. I do want to differentiate, we do often get calls on nuisance animals.
Right.
So that would be an animal that's just getting in someone's trash, or maybe eating someone's cat food off the back porch. In those situations, we usually don't handle those animals. We want to get our hands on the sick and strange-acting ones because those are the areas, that's the area of greatest concern. So the nuisance animals will have to be referred to Wildlife Control Officers, and we have a list of those, and I can actually provide you a link to the DNR's website. They have a comprehensive list on their website of all the Animal Control Officers in the state.
And I think that would be real, I agree. That was one of the recommendations. I think the key question was, we had different agencies, cities, everyone wasn't sure what the procedure. So if you would have step A, B, C, D, everyone would be doing the same thing, and we would be more than willing to help get that information out for you too. And that's, I think that's what was brought to our attention, wasn't sure what the procedure was, and then there was confusion, was it in the city, outside the city, then what, you know, can we track it or stuff like that? So there were a number of questions, and that's why I'm glad you're here. I mean, we just didn't really know. I mean, we had ideas, but we wanted to make sure it was correct information.
Okay. And the flow chart will be available electronic and will be available to publish on your website. This is a draft version that I gave you. The only thing we're waiting on now is confirmation from the Health Department of their contact information. As soon as that's done, and that's the State Health Department, as soon as that's done, it will be a document that you can use.
Let me ask you, do you all have a website?
Sure.
Okay. So we would, we would probably want to meld the two sites together, make sure our site links to you when need be, when it says contact local Health Department, and links to them, when it should go to them.
Absolutely. We can have that done. We have a standing committee now for our website because it's changing almost every day.
Yeah.
So keeping it up to date, and we'd be happy to make those links both with, between all of us.
Yeah, because people come to the county a lot, and rather than recreate everything on the county website, we should really just provide guidance and links to the main websites because you all have the most up-to-date information.
And I agree. What I'd like also would be on that website is the names of the people, your office, so they know who they were calling and so on, because just calling a generic, you know, then they don't, you know, they're embarrassed to do that. But at least if they have a name and someone that says, "This is why we're calling," they feel a little more comfortable and will do that. And that what we would also would want, you know, so we could have that information too. And we would give that to all the cities and any, you know, in our counties, so everyone has the same information. And that's what we're hoping to do.
We do all the animal control for this whole city. Does any city have separate animal control? They all contracted us now.
Right, but we don't, we don't handle wildlife. We're not.
Right.
Well, we don't handle wildlife, yeah, but I mean, they, I'm trying to determine whether there's any department that they go to in the city, or whether they would go to, how do they do that?
They'd go to us.
They go to.
Get referred to us.
Yeah. And then if it was wildlife, you could refer them to the necessary.
Yeah, there are at least, according to the list, are at least two Wildlife and Animal Damage Control Agents that work in Mon County.
So as of, as for, I should say, as for Monague County, because we work cooperatively with all the municipalities, there really isn't a separate city-county. It's just us. So we can make the connections, and then we can talk in our next forum about the cities putting a link to us and/or them on their websites, Health Department.
Yeah.
This is really good. This is one of the quickest solutions I've seen to a problem.
Yeah. And like I say, we're not going to be able to fix all your problems in every situation, but we will be able to kind of fill that niche where this, it's a sick animal, you know, maybe nothing necessarily has been an exposure, so it may not fall into this agency or that agency, but we do want to, if at all possible, test those animals.
Did you have a question? If you just say your name and address so we have further knowledge.
Michael Gray, owner-operator ABC Community Animal Removal. I'm one of your Wildlife Patrol Agents. I'm actually one of your cooperators also. Most of the raccoons that you get from Mon County actually come from our company.
Okay.
Actually, Travis just picked up 15 yesterday. He's got seven more waiting on him today. We do respond like to Mon County School System. We're licensed, insured, the whole nine yards. You should all have one business card each, I gave to the receptionist.
Okay.
And like I say, we function right here within Morda Town.
And we know we use you because that's what we've, we've been told you're the one to go to.
But as a, let me just say this one quick. As, you said you're a Wildlife Control Officer that does work, agent, agent that does work with, I'm just trying to determine whether we probably put, I was trying to determine, I don't want to promote a private business, but.
But I think you're the only.
We'll have to figure out how we put that link.
So we can get it for you.
So we get that for you. Yes, sir.
I'm John Webb with the Health Department overseeing environmental services. I just want to clarify one thing. They're more interested in surveillance issues when it comes down to human or animal exposure when we're involved. If it is a wild animal that's acting strangely out there, obviously you guys aren't going to approach that animal or try to take custody of the animal, correct, USDA?
No.
We're probably looking to either Mike or the Sheriff or DNR to take that animal down.
We will, we will come get sick and strange animals as long as they're not active. They're not a nuisance animal. So we will do that. The only situation where we will not, and I'm not even saying we won't come get it, because we do assist local Health Departments quite often in capturing animals because oftentimes y'all don't have anyone to euthanize or whatever. So we do that. The only time we don't necessarily take, take custody of the animal is when there has been a human or pet exposure. Anytime there's a human or pet exposure, it absolutely goes to the Health Department every time.
Yeah, I mean, we have no issue with taking the animal and sending it away for testing. The issue is if it's still alive and erratic in the area, who takes care of that animal at that point? Is it the Sheriff? Is it DNR? I guess you could hire.
It seems like, correct me if I'm wrong, but just for clarity, it seems like if there's been a human exposure, it would be the Health Department. If there wasn't a human exposure, it would be you all.
That's correct.
Right.
And we do, for the most part, work during regular business hours. We don't have an on-call technician. Our staff is fairly limited, and, you know, we don't have by any means one employee per county. Usually, most of our employees cover multiple counties. So there might be a bit of a time lag if they're working in another county at the time to get to here. So obviously, anytime there's an exposure, I would use any outlet you've had, any resource you had to get your hand on that animal, whether it be that local law enforcement, DNR, whoever can get their hands on it the quickest when there's been exposure.
Well, how does, how does Mike become involved? In other words, if someone, if someone called, follows this chart and contacts you, Rachel, you might be the one to answer this question, contacts you, there hasn't been a human exposure.
Okay.
It's 7:30 at night. How, do we just hope the animal's still there in the morning, or what do we do?
When it comes to seven, you know, 7:30, and we don't have anybody on at that time, I don't know, Sam, what, how's that?
See, and that's, I think, the question. That's, that's the grayish area.
These details better.
That's, you know, like I say, we're a regular business hours operation, and, you know, hopefully, and it seems like most of the calls do come in during regular business hours, but occasionally those after-hours calls, and unfortunately, if we don't have anybody available to answer the phone, then we don't find out about it until the next morning. Now, you know, obviously, if anyone is able to euthanize that animal, we will be able to come get it and test it the following day. That's really the best we can offer in that situation.
Well, let me ask this. Well, how about, Mike, do you work regular business hours?
Work 24/7.
You work 24/7?
I've worked every day except Christmas Day.
Okay. Now, if there's an animal, and it would be an animal that you, if you, if it was from between 9:00 and 5:00, you would have contacted Mike to go get, if he picked it up at 7:30 at night, would then, he deliver it to you all?
He certainly could. We'll test animals.
You would accept that as perform for your, for you?
Yeah. And I want to reiterate too that there's no charge for our services. If we come get a sample, if we come get a sample and have it tested, there's no charge for that, for the testing, essentially. So, you know, we take samples from animal damage officers, agents, we take samples, we pick up roadkill. We're trying to do this in conjunction with our oral rabies vaccination program, so we want to see where the, we want to get all the, all the samples we can get. So, yeah, there's, there's no charge for us testing the samples. That's a free service. But the only, I do want to reiterate that any nuisance animals, we.
You don't pronounce an animal, God, I understand.
But, yeah, any sick, any sick animal, absolutely. Or, you know, and obviously, you know, we don't endorse any, any particular animal damage agents, but there is a comprehensive list with the DNR, and, and many of those give their samples to us. If they, if they think it's sick-acting, then we will eventually get that sample.
Well, if he's going to pick up for you, how does Mike get compensated? Do you, do you compensate him for going to pick up for you?
Well, I don't want, I just, I respect my bounds, but generally, there's a charge from the animal damage agents to the individual that has their acting on their.
That's what I was trying to figure out, whether, whether that, an individual, I got to, I'll use me as an example. I got a strange animal acting in the back, fox or something. I see it. It's out in the daylight, which is unusual for foxes and stuff, and I see it. If I make a call, and it's 7:30, 8:30 at night, if I make a call, you all won't get it. Hasn't had human contact, so the Health Department's not involved. If I call, okay, thank you, Perry, you explain your.
And that's what I was going to explain. We do get several calls on that. If it's just a strange animal, a lot of people are really irate, say they can't get into their house. So we'll send an officer out. If it's a safety thing, we will put the animal down. Our next question was, and we've always been told this, try not to shoot them in the head when you put them down, when you put them out, and then it needs to be froze until an agent can get there. If, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, because that's usually what we do. If, if it's not causing a problem, then we recommend ABC, we'll recommend Mike to go out there. But again, let's say, who gets charged, or when the person gets charged? A lot of people say, well, we don't have the money. We don't have the money to pay anybody to come out and do it, and we want to make sure the person is taken care of, so we're going to go out, you know, serve the community, take care of the animal. And a lot of times, we don't have the ability to freeze the animal overnight, so I don't know if that's a factor for the next day or not.
Is that a factor for the next day?
It's not for us. Ideally, if it can be refrigerated or refrigerated or cooler, worst-case scenario, try to get it in a shady cool spot. Generally, they will still be testable by us the next day because we're not, we're not doing a DFA test, is what the Health Department does. So we're doing a little bit less complicated test. We only use a brain stem, so we can test it the following day.
So in a case like that, then we could call Mike as an agent for you all to come out and get it to you all, that person?
It doesn't matter to us how we get the sample. We'd be glad to take it from law enforcement. We'd be glad to take it from control agents. Any way we can get the sample, we would be glad to take it.
We've picked up from law enforcement before. They'll give us a call and say, hey, you know, we just had this sick-acting fox. We shot it, you know, we'll come and get it, and we'll try to get somebody there as soon as possible.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If it's after-hours, you all are not around, and I understand it.
Right.
And we're not, we don't have the capability to take them back from the office. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
That's where I'm getting, so the next, for him being an agent, you all, we could call him, or have the lame, the person that's in the residence say, "Just keep it here, and we'll have somebody come out and get it from you tomorrow," is what I'm, that's my question.
There ways.
We will take it however we can get it, honestly. And, you know, if the sample has deteriorated to part a test, then we'll have to let them know that. But absolutely, any way we can get our hands on the sample, we'd be glad to take them. We work, you know, we have great relationships with many of the cooperators in the area, and, you know, and it works out well for us and it works out well for them because they're able to say, okay, well, that animal was positive for rabies. You need to, you know, be mindful of animals in your area. And it works so well for us because it's advantageous to our program. So, but absolutely, we will, we're glad to take samples from law enforcement, local law enforcement. We get those calls a lot because oftentimes it is after-hours, and they can't get hold of anyone else. So when the law enforcement puts the animal down, we make every effort to try to get that animal and test it.
To clarify and make, and make sure we get the right information on the website and out to the public, it sounds to me like we need to, to have you all work together. It's more than just putting a link, from the sounds of me, from what I hear right now, because the Health Department has certain issues, and you've got your website, how you do it. In certain events, you all are involved, and your, and your link is, is good, but in the event that it's not 9:00 to 5:00, then you got the sheriff, sheriff involved, and Mike, would there be a willingness to, if, if we were able to get, Jeff, I don't know if you would do this or not, able to get that, that link all together, that we run it by all the departments, from the sheriff to, to you, Mike, to you all, and to the Health, to everyone review that, review all the pages and say, yes, this is correct information? Would everybody be willing to do that? I think we need to do that because I kind of understand right now, but when you put something down on, on the screen yourself, unless, unless it's, it could be, it could link you to the wrong place, and then we actually make matters worse than better, for some people. So I would, I would suggest, I really appreciate you all coming in, but I'd suggest we, we work further with the, the various departments involved. And you need to be involved too, Dana. I didn't mean to leave you out. You're involved in anything that has to do with the animals or otherwise, even some humans, I think.
I do have a question now.
Yes, sir.
I think there's kind of still a gray area. I understand what you guys are doing, and Mike has made it very clear to me, but there's, there's, there's times where there's people that call who are upset because they have, this woman, for instance, the coon didn't show any sickness symptoms, but it was in the daylight, which you know, I know, that sometimes in the spring, they come out in the daylight, but she felt that that was an emergency. So you're going to see that a lot of these probably are not emergency calls. Perry knows that a lot of them are just calls of people who are expecting the county to pay to have this animal removed, basically. So, and then you're saying after-hours, call Mike, but Mike has to be compensated. It's his business too. So I still feel like there's an area there where I know what you guys are doing, and I think that's great because you're going to help us out a lot, you know, when, when there's a sick animal, and we know that it's a sick animal acting funny, we can call you, you'll come. But there's going to be a lot of times, you know, after-hours and times where they're not.
Well, that's where I said that I felt that I kind of understood what everyone was talking about, but not enough to, to say that we could put a couple links on our website and it would answer the problem. That's what I'm saying. And, and I realize that Mike has to be compensated. I just, as the wildlife agent, I didn't know what compensate, other potential compensation avenues that might be. I don't know. We'll have to figure that out.
I did invite Slim Lee, but she was ill today.
Oh, she was ill?
Okay.
Okay. Well, you have all the contact information.
And she'll be able to see it on, on West TV, so we'll be able to get that to her.
Jeff, is this something?
I'll make sure she gets the link.
Work, work with these different departments?
Certainly can, yeah.
We'd very much appreciate that.
I can put it on your website.
Right.
Sheriff's approval on page.
Yeah, and work with the Health Department, Dana, and these people from USDA, to make sure that any information we put on, first of all, makes the right link, the right issue, and, and second, I'll try to address the, what do they call that, FAQs, frequently asked questions, or something like that.
Yeah. With the summer coming up, there's probably going to be more than usual of people asking questions. So maybe if we use, Jeff will be the contact person as a coordinator, as Eldon's saying, to get each party together. We'll try and get all the information, look at it, and then get it online. That, that would be our goal, and that would be our direction. So that way, everyone, you know, knows what's going on. And then if anything happens in between where you see a problem or a glitch, feel free to contact us, or Diane, say, hey, there's this grayish area that we need to really still look at, and we need to come up with some sort of a solution. And that's what, once we get it out there and we see it, then we'll be able to see what, how to, how to answer some of the other questions.
Is that acceptable to everybody, to work with Jeff, try to get the information out thoroughly and accurately?
Yeah, that's great for us. Moving forward, you know, we'll try to do everything we can to make that seamless as possible. And if we come across bumps in the regular.
Yeah.
Well, we really appreciate you coming forward with the information because I was not aware of what, I couldn't give her answers.
And I appreciate what you do because, I mean, I'm from the city, so I'm not used to this. So when they said that, I said, I mean, I looked at Eldon, so I said, I have no idea what to do. So, but basically, I think what, what's good is that, you know, we're going to get all the information, get it out there before the summer, and then move from there. Because once we have the information out there, like I said, then we'll see where the glitches are, where the gray areas are, then we can resolve those. Because right now, it's too much, so we're going to try and figure out how to move forward and go in that direction. But we do appreciate you coming in. That really is very helpful.
So you have something you want to add?
Well, I think, Mike's not here, but Mecca needs to be.
Oh, you're right.
Okay.
Good point.
Right.
Because on Labor Day last year, where no one responded to the man that was bitten at Suncrest, you know, there was a lot of running around. He contacted like every agent. They all kept rolling back into Mecca, and they didn't initially appropriate response until we got bitten the second time.
We need to go.
I do have one other question. Let's say that there is an exposure, and a person or an animal gets bit, and then they contact the Health Department. Is it up to the Health Department to hire Mike Gray to go out and get this animal, or who's it up to?
I don't know. I gotta, gotta look to the Health Department.
That's what I was telling you, that's what I brought up, that that issue comes up. It's going to come up. It's been, it's there before. So then it's either Perry, or it's, it's DNR, or it's Mike, because we don't go out and actually euthanize the animal and take it down.
You don't retrieve the animal.
No, we do not.
What do you do with it?
Well, we retrieve it from, from.
After it's dead.
After it's dead. Yes.
So we still have a problem. We still have that, that maybe animal that may have bit someone out there. So the question is, how do we, what's the procedure we want to use now?
Because not 90% of the time, this is going to happen after-hours, holidays, or weekends.
Right. Yes.
And this, and this is where all this problem comes about. So now, if there's an exposure, and, and the Health Department, who, who's, who's going to call, the Health Department's supposed to send somebody out to get it. That's, that's in the rules, right?
Right.
So is it up to them to contact Mike Gray to go get this animal? It's their responsibility, correct? Generally, we, if it's after-hours, we get a call from 911, saying, hey, the Sheriff is on scene. They want to know what you, what you want them to do with the animal. Usually, it's either put down by the homeowner or by Perry's, one of Perry's people.
And then what do you all do? And then what do you all do when you get that notice?
We go, yeah, we go, we meet, either meet Perry or Perry puts it in the, the pool or the homeowner puts it in the pool. We get it either get it the next day or that evening. Just depends on, on situation, whatever's, you know.
But you, once it's dead, you pick it up?
Correct. We send it away for testing. Of course, we get all the information from the homeowner, whether it's a wild animal or, or it's a actual, uh, domestic animal, get that information as well.
So, I think, I think that's where most of the problem comes, John, if I'm not correct.
Yeah, after hours and evenings.
Now, it's from, it's from Mecca and, and there's exposure and then, you know, if somebody from the health department says, that's not up to us, okay, because we've run into this before.
Yeah, it's for us to go up.
We just need to get something in writing that says, if, if there's an exposure, whose problem is it after that? Okay.
Okay. So, uh, Jeff, we'll have to involve Mecca.
And we'll have to get a clarification on that because, and the bottom line is it's probably gonna end up on the county because, I mean, we have an obligation.
But yes, you're right.
Or the city.
Yeah.
It's in this like.
Right, right.
City, right.
That's why we have to figure, yeah. That's why I said, once we get all the information, that's the perfect kind of question, these two questions, the grayish area that we have to come up with some sort of a protocol. I mean.
I think Dr. Dana was working on that last fall.
Oh, okay.
I've got drafts I've circulated.
Good.
Would you be willing to work with this group as well?
Yes, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, he was the lead. He put together the protocol.
Oh, that, that would be good.
Yeah, that would really be helpful because I think that's what we need, you know, because.
It just, I mean, my forty years of dealing with rabies in this community, this has been the biggest issue. I mean, either the animal is, like, for example, one of our neighbors had her, a coon claw through her screen door in, at noontime. And, uh, she couldn't, you know, there was no, this was several years ago, but, you know, couldn't get anybody to respond and it took off into the woodlot, University's woodlot. I went to the rabies series because one ended up in my backyard with our Goldens about thirteen years ago.
Okay, well, we've got, we've got a, a, a ad hoc group to try to work this out. And if there's problems, we'll have to come back and address those issues. I mean, if, i- i- if there's a question of, of, uh, 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 like you said, that comes back on accounting, uh, budget items or something, we'll have to review that and see how, how we do it.
Yeah, because nine percent of the time, if you remember, it always come back to the Canine Center.
Right.
Right.
They handle, they don't handle wildlife. So, that's why we want to get all this straightened up.
Well, today's May twentieth. What my recommendation would be, could we, um, come up with some ideas so that, say, three weeks, say by June twel- June tenth, that we come up with some, so that gives us almost like three weeks and come back here June tenth and discuss.
Look to Jeff to that.
Yeah, June tenth and then we could all come back and see what we have and then we'd also put a line item if we need to put money in just for worst case, you know, for emergencies, because someone's gonna have to pay for it and, you know, the thing is, it's a health situation. We want to deal with that first. My, the money is secondary, honestly, as much as.
Can we do a week after?
Can we do a week after that?
Oh, yeah. No, that's fine. June, uh.
Seventeenth.
June seventeenth. How's that sound? And that gives us enough time to get everything together and all parties involved. Okay, let's do that.
Because it's purely, it is clearly is a health issue.
Yeah.
And if it's a matter, everyone knows that I'm tight on spending anybody's money, especially other people's.
You're easy to spend on other people's money.
I don't like to spend other people's money. But this is clearly a health issue and, and if it requires a line item, uh, budget line item, then we need to do it.
And we have, and you're the expertise, so we're gonna, you know, rely on you all, come back to us and make the recommendations and we could get that in, you know, I want to try and get in before, you know, when the school's out, you know, you got all the kids running out, you know, it's just something I'd like to have said by summer. So, let's go with June seventeenth. That would be great.
So, between, between the different, the different departments and different groups, you know, we, we can, we can take what we have and then maybe perfect it a little bit more.
Yeah.
I'll do a group email to get everyone's addresses together and then I can all communicate that one.
One question is, do you not need to get the, all the municipal police forces involved, at least the protocol by them? Or are you gonna respond anywhere in the county? If it's in the city of Morgantown, the city of Westover, are you gonna respond? So, you've got four municipalities you're gonna have to get involved.
What, what I'm hoping though is, since it's DNR and it's a wild, they supersede everyone, so everyone would follow the same, theoretically. Theoretically, they should follow the same procedure.
But the health depart, but the health department.
Theoretically.
Certain cases would have to be.
No, you're right. I understand.
More than half part of the response to the incident.
Right. Well, it looks like we have to, I agree.
We'll inform them and make, see if they're interested. Yeah, you're right. That's probably the better.
To, to at least let them participate.
Yes. Okay, that's a good idea.
To be an active partner in this.
Okay.
And that's, that's.
And EMS.
Yeah. Yeah, I already mentioned EMS.
Yeah.
I, I think it's a great conversation, uh, just to be sure, because we, we had such an interaction and very good conversation here. I'm not sure whether Janet got everybody's name, so is there people who?
Did you get everyone's?
Doctor.
Doctor Brooks-Gator?
Brooks-Gator? Do you have everyone else?
Mills.
I'm Sam Mills.
Okay. Well, we look forward to getting the information and, and seeing you all in four weeks. Okay, and I appreciate you coming in. Thank you very much.
Appreciate this. It's a good move. Thank you very much.
Is the health department leaving? Okay, I need to call you on another issue. I could call you. I was out at the Western End and I just need to, I need your advice on an issue because I'm not sure what direction. Would that be possible? I don't like, I don't think the means would be that long. Yeah, that would be great. I'd appreciate it.
Can you talk about the roof payment too?
Yeah, I know. So, I thought that at the same time. Yeah.
Just do, start work session early.
Yeah, okay, that's good. Um, okay, correspondence, letter from Holly Childs, Director of Mon County Development Authority regarding terms of members.
Yeah, this is just a letter on May five, the terms expire for the following board members. Wilbur England, Richard Harvey, Pat Martin, Dave McCormick and Alan Sharp. Richard Harvey has expressed that he will not be able to continue another term due to work schedule. Uh, the others have indicated that they, um, would like to be reappointed if you'd consider their positions.
I do have a question. I also received, uh, interest and I don't know if, I mean, whether he needs to be interviewed or whether he would meet the need. Uh, Frank Vitale was quite interested and I think he would be excellent.
There, I think there's a couple of openings on, on that.
Okay, so I'd like to put Frank Vitale and I don't know if we have to really, since he's been here so much, whether we interview or, but at least wait a week, but.
Well, let me explain something here now. The, the, the ones from the cities, like the Granville and Star City.
Oh, gotcha.
We just confirmed that.
Okay.
We just, the, the city nominate and we just confirmed that.
Okay.
Their participation. The others are, are, are appointment appointments. And basically how we've, how, how, how we've tried to operate is we have people come in for, for an interview if anyone commissioner wanted.
Okay.
The person that come in for an interview. I know Frank Vitale.
And he's interviewed for all, so that's.
Interviewed for other positions, so I, I have, don't have a need to interview him.
Okay, neither do I. I would like to.
But we should ask Ed.
Okay.
Out of courtesy, to the other commissioner. Just ask Ed.
I'll see who else we might have.
See else who might be interested, yeah.
And check, because it seems to me like we still have two or three openings.
Okay.
There's one or two that have in, indicated interest still.
Okay, so do I have a motion for the Wilbur England, Pat Martin, David McCormick Jr. and Alan Sharp?
Do you want to just wait till next week when you have the new?
Oh, we could do them all next week. Okay, see if there's what other openings. Okay. That's fine. Then we'll just hold that off for one week and do that all next week. That's fine. A letter from Keith Burdette regarding approval of bonding capacity.
Hey, I don't know if you want to go back, but we didn't ask for public comment before you started meeting, I don't think.
Right.
I apologize. I am sorry. I was, I crossed it off too. Okay, I appreciate it.
You're in trouble.
Yeah, I know. Uh, my mind's been somewhere.
Public's gonna get you.
Uh, comments from the public. I apologize. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on any issue? Feel free, just state your name, address and say your piece. Does anyone like to speak? Good. I, I don't feel so bad. Okay, thank you for reminding.
Sorry.
Okay, letter from Keith Burdette.
Um, this correspondent serves as official notice at pursuit to West Virginia Code seven eleven B eight. The West Virginia Development Office has reviewed the Montague County Commission's application for a tax increment financing project number two for District Number Four, the University Town Center. The development office has found that the application is complete and thereby approved a total additional bonding capacity not to exceed thirty million dollars, bringing the total borrowing capacity to fifty million. These funds will be used to make infrastructure improvements on the western side of the Interstate seventy-nine between the Star City exit and the new interchange currently under construction in Montague Town.
This is the first step of Phase Two. It's, uh, it's fantastic. We got the approval. We're still waiting on the STIF approval, the sales tax increment financing, but this is the, the first step. And, uh, there, there, there's a couple of other correspondents here, uh, also that, uh, once the, uh, I will have a more thorough report of where we're at, what we're going, the economic consequences. It, it's an exciting day. This is, this is the first step of what this TIF, uh, whole STIF and TIF project was all about. The development of the west side and, and, uh, creating a, uh, economic, uh, opportunity that connects Mile and Park Gateway Mall, Westover, Granville, the whole western side of, uh, of, um, this county. So, a- at a later meeting, uh, I, I will give a more thorough report. By that time, we should have the answer on the STIF, which will make, will finalize the entire project, or at least Phase Two of the.
Good, in fact, this is the perfect time because one of the questions I was gonna ask you, could we in the next several weeks, hopefully, have Jason Donahue and you give a, just an update, because I think there's a lot of interest and just like the people to know that it is still going on and.
Yeah, I'm working on it all the time. I don't bother people with it all the time because a lot of times there isn't, I can't, there isn't anything to, to, to tell that, that is, is not still in flux.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, as you've all authorized me, I work on this almost weekly.
Okay.
Uh, and that was what I was going to do, uh, invite, uh, not only Jason Donahue, but there's a couple of people that's worked on the economic projections, uh, that I wanted to bring in and have a more complete report once we get to
Okay.
that point, which should be, uh, in a couple of weeks.
Okay, that, that's great to hear. And I, I think that, that's the interest and as long as we hear that, we'll move forward on that. Is there any other correspondence?
And this, the next letter is just establishing base sales tax amount for the economic opportunity development. Uh, fourteen million, ten hundred twenty-three thousand, three hundred twenty dollars and seventy-four cents.
That's, that's the tax increment, sales tax base. If you recall, it was previously fifteen point one million. And we've been through, through the, the whole explanation, that legislation that was passed was to bring, bring the base into the, closer to the true, uh, tax, uh, that it was before the start of the TIF. And it was before it's fifteen point one. I contended always that it was, it should be thirteen five.
They got halfway.
We, as good government does, we reached a, a compromise with the tax department and the governor's office and we've come up with fourteen point two, which I'm very satisfied with. It will, uh, that fourteen two will not, the, the, the economic development was gonna, going to, uh, the TIF was going to work, it just was how quickly.
Right.
This will, this will help to keep it more in line with what our original projections are when the commission voted originally to establish a TIF and a STIF over there.
Okay, well, good. I appreciate, and I'm really, it's a good time because I think people have been just getting a little answering questions, but it will be coming.
So have I.
Yes, I know.
But I sort of bite my tongue out of it and other people nervous that I could help with.
Car, any other correspondence?
Yeah.
Okay, um.
There was a, uh, pledge, um, drop that came in this morning from Honey to May. It just needs the commission's approval.
Okay.
They want to lower their, um, bond from two million to one million, which we just have very few funds over there.
So, it's, it's not a problem. You all both, you both recommend it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, I move to, uh, what, what's the amount? I'm sorry.
Two billion, two million to one million bonding capacity.
Is it written on here? Am I blind? Oh, it's not?
At the bottom.
Is it the bottom, two million fifty thousand?
Oh, okay. And, and we want to, to, uh, we moved to so, re- release the two point fifty. Do we need to include anything about the one million?
I think they do, uh, but they have to get the Q sub number and everything, so.
You just have to release.
So, the motion is just to release. Okay, I move that we release the, uh, the par valve collateral of two million fifty thousand.
Second, Ben Poplin moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, unfinished business, funding for Arnettville Community Center.
Okay, um, there was a question on the wording that Phil had in his letter.
Yeah.
And I called and talked to him about it.
Okay.
Um, we were interpreting, two were one way and two were the other.
I know, I understand.
Um, Tom and I won. It's not that they can't, you can't, you can't loan, you can't appropriate.
Can't loan, so you can't appropriate. So, what we'll do, that, what we're going to do then is we are going to give them, appropriate the additional funds. This will be in our adjustments.
Right.
Uh, when, for July. And, uh, we will, i- in exchange for that, we'll, uh, reduce, uh, we'll figure it out exactly, but I, I, no more than reduce their annual appropriation until that's recouped. I mean.
Terry D'Amico's here and she had questions.
Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
We'll just, we'll just reduce your appropriation to cover what otherwise would have been paid, paid, payments for it.
Okay, my, my only question is, uh, you said in July, so will we, what will we be doing between now and?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying the appropriation will be adjusted in July.
But what they need is the upfront money.
You need the money now.
For the contract.
That's what I mean.
Real busy now.
That's, that's, that's what I'm trying to.
Wanted to be sure.
I'm trying to make a motion that we appropriate the money that we were gonna use as a loan, actually appropriate the money with the understanding that their annual appropriations in future years will.
Diminish.
Uh, recoup that over a period of what, five years, six years?
So, we're doing twenty-five thousand and then the ten thousand that we pledged them, that that's not touching the ten thousand we've given them for operations.
Right.
That's.
So, we're coming up with thirty-five thousand between now and June thirty to let them get the contract started.
Right.
Right.
And then we will.
But their, but their appropriation for next fiscal year will be reduced by whatever we come up, a five-year payback, six-year payback, seven-year payback, whatever.
Okay.
Wha- whatever we negotiate.
I, I will, I will second that. So, we are understanding. We're both in agreement. Um, uh, call for the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Congratulations. So, you can finally move forward on that project.
Well, you, you're, as soon as you get that furnished, your payback will come immediately.
Yeah.
We, a couple of years ago, we had to appropriate additional nineteen thousand dollars just to pay the gas bill.
And when that's all done, would you be willing to invite us out there? I think the three of us would like to come out and meet the people.
We eat too much. I eat too much.
I know.
We will, we will have, have a celebration.
But that sounds great. Well, we're glad it took, we're sorry it took so long and through the procedures, but that's how the government works. We had to make sure everything was legal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Uh, new business, appropriation for mental hygiene hearings. What did we, I was not at that meeting, so I'll.
Uh, we talked to Eileen Ortiz, who's the, um, mental hygiene commissioner. They are not getting, um, the services that they're requiring that would make it easier for them to operate through the, um, university health associates.
Okay.
We've been setting aside money in our budget for years to pay for services of consultations and certifications. So, what we'd like to do is as of June thirty, um, no longer use their services, but have that money available in our budget so that we can, uh, have Valley charge us for their certifications.
Okay.
We were paying them what, forty thousand dollars?
Yes.
We're paying forty thousand, we're paying a fat, flat fee of forty thousand dollars and they're providing the service. Based on that, based on the report as Diane was explaining, the, the cost for that service is substantially less
Okay.
than forty thousand dollars.
And that was cut down.
Yeah, and therefore they are recommending we terminate this agreement.
Okay.
And, uh, pay as used, which I'm always excited for, what we actually give in return.
Through Valley.
Through, through Valley. So, I make that motion.
Okay, I second. Ben Poplin moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Employment of park superintendents, should it be sendent or sendence? Is it plural now?
Right.
Tendence, yes.
Tendence, because it's two.
Uh, one is Rachel Mitchell and she.
Uh, one is Rachel Mitchell, and she was hired to be the superintendent at Mason Dixon Park, she should be able to begin June 8.
Okay.
And the other.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the second is Catherine Artis, she is scheduled to start June the 3rd, and she will be the superintendent at Chestnut Ridge Park.
So am I.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Great, uh.
I'll bring both of them in as soon as they start.
Okay, yeah, I'd like, okay, any other new business?
No.
Okay, reports from any elected officials? Okay.
The only thing I'll say is, we have, uh.
No, well, I was too, but you didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Elected officials.
He likes to go through.
Oh, yeah, I like to move.
When I was just gonna go through.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna ask that, um, we be put on the agenda for June the 10th, that we can present, the tax office that is, to present the delinquent list.
Ooh. I paid mine.
Yes, you did.
But Jim Justice didn't.
We have, uh, five of our deputies attending, starting today, a DUI conference in Glade Springs, where they were in the top 52 for DUI arrest, and sheriffs also attending, and will also be receiving the number one Sheriff's Department for last year.
Yeah.
But he'll tell you more about that next week, I'm sure.
Oh, okay, when's that scheduled for?
Starting today, there's a conference today, tomorrow, and Friday.
Is that where he's at? All right, he's taking his award, so.
Taking his award, I'm here running the range.
That's right, there you go, good job, good job.
Any other elected officials? Okay, nope, okay, reports from county commission?
You got anything for these people?
Nope, they look quiet.
They don't have anything. Um, I'm gonna go over a couple things, um, real quick, uh, I, I spent two days over in Martinsburg, uh, with the County Commissioners Association, had a very good meeting on Sunday with, uh, Senator, oh my goodness, I'm going out of my mind, uh, head of the Judiciary Committee, why am I blanking? Uh, why am I blanking on, all of a sudden I blanked on who it was, Senator Trump, Charlie Trump, I'm sorry, Senator Charlie Trump, head of the Judiciary Committee, and Walter Perdue, House of Delegates, they were there, and we, we spent a lot of time talking about tax reform, and how important tax reform is. One of the things we've got to be very careful with, and we've emphasized repeatedly, is that if you take something away in tax reform, uh, you've got to repli, you've got to replace it. Uh, that was the big mistake that was made on the food tax.
Yeah.
Uh, they removed, they removed a rather equitable tax, because everyone eats food, and, uh, but, but they removed it, uh, and they didn't replace it, and that's created the economic difficulties. One of the things in so far that's been floated around, and why, with your all's, uh, authorization, I've tried to be very active in, is the concern that they're going to try to shift, that the legislature may try to shift more responsibilities to the counties without funding those responsibilities.
Mm-hmm.
So I've been, I've been watching that closely, I, uh, I, as I said, we had a very, very good conver- conversation, and, uh, Senator Trump made it clear, and, um, and I, I told him that we, I felt that our commission shared those, as well as the County Commissioners Association, our commission individually, the three of us, share that any ta- any tax reform, or any tax revenue, it has to be broad-based, everyone has to pay their fair share, it's gonna be broad-based, and should be a lot, uh, it, it, it should, should, tax should never be crushing, so it has to, it has to reach that everyone pays their fair equitable share, uh, and there, there are certain things that could come and could be more efficiently and effectively, uh, done at the county level, there are some items like that, uh, provided we have the funding to do it. Uh, we also spent a long time talking about the homestead exemption, and many counties, um, are not, well, they would go bankrupt, i- i- if you raise the homestead exemption whatsoever, they'd go bankrupt, there, there are certain counties that, you know, you've got, uh, 65% seniors, uh, that pays, that pays their bu- that, that's what creates their budget, so if you take, you know, uh, a ha- a house, uh, I can't remember which county it was, but forty, the housing, uh, median housing income is like 47,000 in this county, I think it was, I think it was McDow, McDow County, but don't hold me that too, it's $47,000, and if you take, uh, that was a median income, uh, housing, if you take, if you raise that to 40,000, that means people would only be paying, uh, 65% of the people would only be paying on $7,000 instead of $27,000, which you, it doesn't take a mathematician to figure out, you're gonna go bust, and there's many, many counties in that situation. But what I explained was, was our concern is the artificial value of people's homes here in Montague County, it exists also in Berkeley County, and I use this expla- explanation, a woman that was here during the property reappraisal's hearing, she, her, uh, her hu- she and her husband, she was now a widow, uh, back in 1941, I believe it was, 1941, went out and borrowed $3,500, and he was a master carpenter, and he built his, their house for $3,500. Uh, she's lived in it, she's now a widow, she raised her family, her kids, she wants a stay in her house, this was an actual case in front of us, uh, her house is now worth, uh, $200,000, or 195,000. She has to pay taxes on 200,000, that is an artificial value, because her house is worth $3,500, what she paid for it, because she's not gonna sell it, she wants to live there. So I urged them, and, and, Senator Trump and Delegate Perdue, said that they're very much looking at that, to ha- set a fix, if you live in a house, a- and this was one of my suggestions, and like I said, we discussed it for a long time, the whole board, not just me, but the whole board, if, if you've lived in a house, if you built a house, you've lived in a house, and you've lived there maybe five years, for discussion's sake, let's say five years you've lived there, in that house, and it reaches a certain value, that escalation should stop, because it's artificial escalation price, and it should, the, the value of that, or the taxable value of that property should only, um, should only change if you transfer it or sell it, or some, something like that, that would help our seniors, uh, and the, the other part of that was, which was, was interesting comment, uh, Charlie Trump said the other part with the, the homestead exemption, is that the widow that I spoke of, and, uh, maybe the 40,000, but he doesn't think that Jim Justice needs the 40,000, you know, so, that, that was an interesting, that, that was an interesting observation, so, uh, I will continue, um, uh, representing the commission, uh, while watching the tax reform, um, uh, discussions, and, uh, work, work, make sure that our, our county is, uh, is, uh, that our voice is heard. Let me, we, there, there's a number of other things I'll cover in future meetings, because I got, uh, I got, uh, West Virginia Association County Budget Meeting next, next week, following week, we got that, uh, West Virginia Association of Counties Board Meeting there, which I will be attending over at Black, Blacks, uh, Black Water Falls, um, so I have more to report. I will, I will throw this out for your thoughts, uh, I spent a good ti- bit of time talking with Doug, uh, Copenhagen, I don't know why I'm blanking on names today, must be age is catching up with me or something, uh, Copenhagen, Doug Copenhagen, he's the, um, President of the County Commission over at Berkeley County, and from, from this board meeting, we, uh, he's on the Legislative Committee, who also attends the board meeting, we ended up talking about a lot of common in- interests that Montague County and Berkeley County has, that the other counties don't necessarily have, but we try to represent and protect all the counties, and one of, one of the things that he suggested, and I think it would be a good idea, so I'm presenting it to, to you, to think about, he would like for us to have some joint meetings with the Berkeley County Commission and the Montague County Council, uh, to talk about shared issues and shared ideas and shared direction, uh, which I think would be a good idea, because Berkeley and Montague County is very much in the same, uh, same situation.
Great.
So I'll, I'll stop my report there, there was a number of other things, like I said, I'll cover in future, uh.
Okay.
Uh, commission meetings.
Well, thank you, I, I just, you just brought up an issue, and I just wanted to add, you were talking about the counties not, uh, picking up extra from the state and not, uh, getting any extra money, this was, uh, news release just came out, Metro News, Nicholas County Budget Cuts, Time Commitment Contributed Prosecuting Attorney just resigned because they had so many major cuts because of what's going on, yeah, they can't afford it, so I thought that, that goes along with what you said. Um, first, let's congratulate Morgantown High School Girls Tennis Team, it's the first time they won the state championship, uh, I, I do want to congratulate them, I think it's a great honor, and really proud of them. Uh, what is coming out, and I, I was gonna respond about the roads, but I thought, instead of saying anything about the roads, let's wait and see, at 1:30 today, the Blue Ribbon Report of three years ago is finally being released, and also, the national study, I don't know if you heard this, that's been announced, that the rural roads in West Virginia are one of the worst, so, I mean.
We had discussion on that, but I didn't, not to report that.
So, I, so I think we're waiting to see, I, I'm really, I think we're all interested in seeing what the Blue Ribbon Report is, and see if there's any actual, any ideas. Um, the roads, they did finally get a list out, and, um, I want to see if we can get a link to that, I'll try and get, see if we can get a link to that, to put on our site of what roads are actually gonna be paved and actually done in the county, um, real appreciative of that. Also, I just want you to know, on the website that we launched, you know, and your help, in one week, we had 2,795 page views, so there clearly is an interest in people are one, 7,900.
7,000.
2,000, 2,795.
905.
In one week, yeah, so people were interested in so on, um, but, uh, so I'll, I'll hold off on that, uh, what I'd like to do, with your permission, is, um, adjourn the meeting, and then, we have actually two issues that we could talk, since the health department is here, that we could go into a work session, which is informal, there's no decision being made, so I would like to see if I could have a motion to adjourn, and then.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned, and if you.